And I see Mr. Pritchard hastily making his way to the podium with great excitement to provide the board an update related to school safety. While you know, we have a number of efforts always underway with our robust and comprehensive safety plan, wanted to provide an update to you at this juncture related to three larger topics. An update on status of blue ribbon panel work, our MOU with Henrico County Police, and a general update related to progress on our weapons detection and metal detection field test. We will be coming back to you in June as well with a presentation, but again, wanted to focus on those three areas, though not representative of all safety efforts, provide you a snapshot at this time of progress. Mr. Pritchard?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I'm happy to be here today to provide updates on school safety and security in ACPS. School safety and security is one of the ACPS cornerstones and a shared priority for all of us, so I'm pleased to provide these updates. In today's presentation, I will provide a quick overview of the many layers of safety and security measures ACPS continues to keep in place. I'll then provide a status update of the implementation of the blue ribbon panel recommendations, our MOU with Henrico Police, bus safety, and reporting on our findings from the metal and weapon detector field testing that was completed right before spring break. I want to start by grounding the conversation in the many layers of security that make up our safety plan. No individual layer is foolproof, but rather, the combination of these layers helps support the safe learning environments we strive to provide every day. We are continuously evaluating these layers and the potential for new layers to assist us in this shared goal. In addition to the logistical layers noted above, each school has established emergency response protocols. These detailed plans are not shared publicly, however, they are routinely reviewed with school and division staff. Annual and ongoing safety and emergency training is also provided for administrators, school counselors, school security officers, and other designated staff. Additionally, safety drills of all types are practiced with students and staff. Training and drills often happens in partnership with our Henrico Police Department and school resource officers, ensuring that all involved parties have shared expectations for responding to incidents. With all of these hardened layers in place, we still need to focus on the two most important factors in supporting and maintaining safe schools, which are people and relationships. Our staff works tirelessly to create a positive school culture where everyone understands their role in school safety. The rest of today's presentation builds on these foundational layers. We will begin with an update on the implementation of the blue ribbon safety panel recommendations. As you will recall, last summer, Dr. Cashwell formed a blue ribbon safety panel with experts from HCPD, Fire, and Emergency Operations to conduct an in-depth look at physical security of ACPS schools with the focus on the ability to harden access points and maintain security during response time. This panel was tasked with conducting a review that went above and beyond the comprehensive safety audits that ACPS conducts each year. ACPS received approximately $5 million for safety improvements identified by the blue ribbon safety panel, and we are now in various stages of procuring these items. The improvements recommended by the panel include unifying the exterior identification signage on doors and classroom windows, providing unified pathway indicators and coverings for view panels and interior doors, providing additional card swipe access as well as signage at exterior entrances, providing additional card swipe access at campus schools and schools with detached multipurpose buildings, also providing additional radios and upgrading our Knox Box access to all schools. Of these existing contracts are being utilized for the additional radios, card swipe components, and door buzzers. Radios have been ordered and will be delivered as soon as they arrive. Some of the card reader parts are on backorder, but these components will start being installed upon delivery. The signage components have been inventoried, and all the elements are now in the procurement quoting process. Finally, we're working on finalizing a plan with police and fire partners to upgrade our Knox Box access. The next update is our MOU with the Henrico County Police Division. The MOU between ACPS and HCPD outlines the roles and responsibilities of each entity as it relates to school security and student safety. The MOU is updated every two years, and prior to updating the document, a community survey is administered to get feedback on the current MOU, which is available online. The survey was open last month, and the feedback generally indicated that members of the community find it to be clear, concise, and easy to understand. Other feedback included gratitude for SROs, general concern about SROs having contact with children in schools, and requests for more SROs in schools. Following the closure of that survey, the ACPS and HCPD teams met to discuss the responses and to draft edits based on the survey feedback, as well as relevant changes to the law and practice. We are now working together to finalize these edits and to document and obtain signatures. We anticipate the MOU will be publicly available in the coming weeks. Bus safety is always included as part of our overall ACPS safety plan. Our code of conduct applies to students starting at the bus stop each day. Creating open dialogue and elevating the voice of our valued transportation staff is critically important. To increase opportunities for staff and drivers to provide regular and timely feedback and to improve overall communication efforts in the pupil transportation department, Jim Ellis, Kevin Roy, and I began meeting with employees at all five transportation zones each month last year. These have provided open and honest dialogue and enhanced our work together, so we plan to continue these monthly meetings next year. This year, Transportation has initiated a pilot to use tablets to support bus drivers and a variety of their responsibilities, including a new app that allows them to submit student behavior referrals more efficiently. Tablets were expected in September, however, a supply chain issue caused a delay, and we've been phasing them in since December. After spring break, we began a pilot with a new bus referral application on the tablets. Drivers at three schools have started using the app to submit student referrals to school administrator. The app allows drivers to see where in the process the referral is at any time. So far, feedback has been positive. Later this spring, we plan to facilitate focus groups with bus drivers and administrators from piloted schools. Those findings will inform our next steps as a division and the use of the app. As you know, over the last several months, ACPS has conducted a division-wide field test of metal detectors and weapon scanners. Our purpose in conducting a field test was to try a various methods of metal detection and weapon scanning in order to inform division-wide considerations. This was truly a team effort with central office staff and communications, emergency management, and there, and school leaders and teachers in participating building, the sheriff's office, HPD, and vendors and suppliers who assisted us. We are truly grateful to everyone who supported and participated in this field test. Additionally, many of our public school division peers, both in Virginia and North Carolina, took the time to share their experience and learnings with metal detectors and weapon scanners. This greatly informed our approach, and we are very appreciative of their time and willingness to share their practices. The field test included three phases in which we assessed the efficacy in both metal detectors and weapon scanners across elementary, middle, and high schools. A total of six ACPS schools participated. Principals informed and educated staff, families, and students about the field test before any procedures were changed on site. Our communications team created and shared several videos so that students knew what to expect from the process. Our counselors addressed anxieties with students, and our teachers even created social stories for some of our exceptional education students. Phase one of the field test deployed traditional metal detectors at various entry points at three high schools, Goblin, Hermitage, and Verona. During this process, train staff led randomly selected students through freestanding detectors. The three schools have different campus styles, which require various types of logistics to funnel students to the detectors. Some schools also screened visitors upon entry. Walk-through metal detectors do not distinguish between weapons and everyday objects like keys and cell phones, which can cause long waits, slow-moving lines, when everyone has to empty pockets, surrender cell phones, and have their backpacks searched. It is for these reasons that we had to randomly select students at the high schools to conduct this phase of field testing. This method only allowed us to capture 8% to 15% of the student population. Even with only a small percentage of students accessing the metal detectors, the process was both time-consuming and human resource-intensive. The greater percentage of students selected to pass through the metal detectors, the more time it took and the more complicated it became. Phase two hosted weapon scanners at Brooklyn and Shore Pump Middle Schools. Again, the layout of the particular building influenced the logistical considerations and setup of the entry points and scanners. Two different types of weapon scanners were tested at Brooklyn in order to provide a side-by-side comparison. Weapon scanners allowed the students to pass through without removing keys or phones because the technology is scanning for high-density metals and thus sophisticated enough to pick up weapons and firearms, but not keys. This technology is being used in some school divisions and is found in amusement parks and concert venues as they are effective at scanning large numbers of people in a very efficient manner. In today's world, people carry a variety of metal items with them such as cell phones, wireless headphones, and metal water bottles. Weapon scanners allow visitors to simply walk through a threshold without stopping to empty their pockets or remove any of their personal items except laptops and items such as umbrellas and thick metal water bottles. Because of the difference in the technology during Phase Two of the weapons detection field testing, every student at a selected entry point was scanned. In the testing sites, we were able to capture 95% to 100% of all students that entered the school that day. As reflected in the surveys and focus groups, this had a bigger impact on feelings of safety and security offered by the devices. Phase three involved weapons scanners, also involved weapons scanners. In this phase, we used a scanner at Lakeside Elementary School to assess the impact in an elementary building, and we returned to Hermitage High School so that we could directly compare the metal detectors and weapon scanners in the same environment. Again, we were able to scan most of the students arriving on campus with this method. For a sense of how the two systems compared, at Hermitage High School, we scanned approximately 130 students in 30 minutes with metal detectors. When we returned with weapon scanners, we were able to scan approximately 1,100 students in 30 minutes. The efficiency of weapon scanners was only amplified at the elementary school with fewer laptops needed to come out of backpacks. Roughly 400 students passed through the weapon scanners in 20 minutes at Lakeside Elementary. As I've noted, we learned quite a bit from this experience. Some of the highlights were that each school layout requires a nuanced approach with varying number of entry points and staffing considerations. Both metal detection and weapon scanning are labor-intensive processes. We do not currently have the administrative or security personnel to implement at scale. Weapons detection was more time-efficient, with most students being scanned more quickly. The impacts on instructional time were minimized. That being said, through the process, we also figured out ways to make the process even more time-efficient. The all-inclusive nature of weapon scanners had greater impact on feelings of improved safety. There were very practical differences in the implementation of the two weapon scanning technologies utilized, and regardless of type, the process became more smooth with practice and repetition daily. After each field testing school visits, all families and staff were provided an opportunity to complete a community survey. The survey asked questions and offered a platform for their feedback. Focus groups were hosted at the field test schools with staff at the schools and students at secondary schools. To capture the experience and feedback, we did not conduct a focus group with our elementary students. The next few slides will show the data from the few of the survey questions. The general feedback we received was that approximately 80% of the ACPS families and staff report feeling safe at these three high schools. Additionally, about 68% of families and staff at those three schools reported that additional visible security measures make them feel more safe. Finally, more than half of our families and staff surveyed reported that metal detectors on site made them worry less about their safety, though staff reported that much lesser of an extent. The survey and focus groups captured a great deal of other information. A majority of families and staff strongly agreed or agreed that metal detectors had a positive effect on decreasing weapons in school, but to different extents. Families and staff disagreed with the notion that metal detectors had a positive impact on mental health. Some staff and families strongly agreed or agreed that having metal detectors was not disruptive to the school day. There was a significant difference between the percentage of families and staff who believed that metal detectors are worth the investment for the division. The most frequent concerns cited were not effective if only a small sample of students are screened, negative impact on student mental health and well-being, instructional time was impacted by delays, and the process was very labor-intensive. The numbers of family and staff feeling safe at their schools remain consistent with our Phase Two and Phase Three schools. At these schools, roughly the same number of staff reported feeling more safe with additional visible security measures, but just over half of the families reported that these make them less fearful of harm. This is down from 68% of families in the Phase One schools. Finally, families and staff reported that having weapon detectors in the schools made them worry less about physical safety at the same rates as those individuals responding to the metal detector question. Across all of our surveys, 30% of the families and staff consistently reported that the metal detectors or weapon scanners had a positive impact on their mental health. Across the survey, between 50% and 70% of staff and families supported the division making an investment in one of these technologies. Staff supported for weapon scanners was more than 10% higher than their support for metal detectors. Families were consistent in their support at 66% to 68% for either. As you've heard throughout the report on the field test, the weapon scanners provide a number of additional benefits beyond what traditional metal detectors were capable of. In sum, the scanners were more timely, less intrusive, captured most students instead of a small fraction of them, and provided greater feelings of security and safe for staff, parents, and students. For these reasons, ACPS is interested in further exploring the logistical and financial implications of implementation and hearing from our entire ACPS community beyond the six field test schools on this topic. With that in mind, we plan to open a survey from April 24th to May 10th. The survey will be sent out to the entire ACPS community in English and Spanish versions. Given the findings from the field tests, the focus of the questions will be about weapon scanners in particular. We will use that community input to finalize next steps. We will then report back with specific and logistical recommendations for the school board at the June meeting. In closing, we want to reiterate that our schools are safe places. Our ongoing efforts and proactive measures help ensure that they remain that way. We would also like to take the opportunity to say thank you to this board, our partners within the county, school leaders and staff, and our community for all of their support to keep everyone in ACPS safe. This concludes my update, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Before we open it up to questions, again, want to thank Mr. Pritchard. John Casulo is here as well from the safety team and the field test schools specifically for the amount of time and attention that went into this. You can imagine with all our schools have on their plates undertaking this kind of an experience where we knew it would be a little messy, there'd be lots of learning, and they welcomed us with open arms to complete this task. So, huge kudos to them. And again, the field test so important because it did allow us, as Mr. Pritchard reported, to sort of peel away the notion of even pursuing traditional metal detectors and wands and will allow us now to focus on the potential next steps in logistics related to the weapon scanners, thus wanting to make sure we expand survey to the entire community on that one particular aspect to learn more before we bring recommendations to you. But it was just so important, the work our field test schools did in allowing us to get to this point. So I just want to thank them publicly once more for their hard work on this. And then again, Chair Cancel will turn it to you for board member questions.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Yes, gratitude is definitely in order for you and your team and everyone who participated in any way in this process. It is unfortunate that we find ourselves in these times where this type of field test is necessary, but that's where we are, so we appreciate this presentation. I'm going to start to my right with Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I concur with you in the superintendent comments. Ms. Pritchard, let's go to Slide 3 if we could. For our bus safety update, could you share how the three schools were selected to be part of the bus referral app pilot?
Well, I think most of anything that we do, if you want to do bus...
Bus?
Did you say three?
I'll just verbally share...
Slide 3.
Verbally share the schools, because it's actually, I think, Slide 6 while he was trying to locate it.
Slide 6, I apologize.
That's okay, it's Baker Holiday in Brooklyn.
Yes.
So, those are the schools we're thinking of.
And we try to always select things across the magisterial district, try not to pick on the same schools over and over again to be field tested and pilot these programs. So those three schools were selected, and I think that we've established great working relationships with all of our schools, but in particular, I think that we've done a great job with those three schools, and they were willing and eager to help us out.
Awesome. Now, I appreciate that, and I think that speaks to equity in regards to making sure that we don't always dip from the same pond. On Slide 11, I transpose the 3 and 6. On Slide 11, summary of findings. Could you describe the level of staffing that was required to monitor and administer the metal detectors and weapon scanners, just the level of staffing?
Roughly for each scanner, so for the weapon scanners themselves, so if you did that, you had somebody that was helping direct the line to get them to go through the process, informing them, take your laptops out, and any kind of like heavy metal water bottles and umbrellas. Those would set off the weapons detectors. There was somebody that was there watching and monitoring and collecting the laptops and handing them back to the students, so that was part of it. There was a person there that was actually standing and watching to see if it was being set off. And then if the alarm was set off, just for the sake of time and moving things along, we generally asked a student to walk backwards, go back through. Once they did, if it went off again, all of their stuff was collected, and they were escorted over to a secondary site where they went through a second scanning, which involved a metal detector and a searching of the bag. So that was very helpful.
So the second, if necessarily the second layer, that was another staffing person?
Yes, two.
Wow, so five basically per...
Per device, yes.
Yeah. So that being said, is it possible, and this is kind of hypothetical as you look at next steps, is it possible to utilize safety volunteers to help the staffing needs in order to decrease the impact of existing school staff?
So, I think this is a great question. What we learned from the field test certainly was that the weapon scanners versus the traditional detectors require less individuals monitoring. And you know, what we really wanted to do was explore the feasibility to use staff we currently employ and have on hand. So particularly at our high school and middle schools, you've already got some individuals who are trained on safety, administrators, SROs, SSOs, who are able to come together. And so, we felt that it was doable. I think the chart you were referring to, and Lenny didn't get that up, was on Slide 11. Yeah, you did say 11. But I know, it's hard, and they're probably not numbered down there, it's the chart. So, you were really, I think, thinking about the comparison of the number of staff it's taking with one versus another. And so, both certainly require extra individuals and some time, and so we would really need to look at what the ideal model would be because we don't want to put extra. We explored what other school systems do. There are some school systems where beyond the typical trained safety staff and administrators, they might have other staff who report a little earlier for an extra stipend, for example, that kind of thing. So I think it's still to be determined what the ideal staffing ratio would be for the various models, but certainly when you look at the Phase One versus the Phase Two product, the Phase Two is much less people-intensive and thus a little bit more viable there, but people are a factor with both, to your point, yes.
And the only reason I brought it up is because we've been talking about in perpetuity just recruiting, retaining, rewarding.
That's right.
As we put more weight on our system, if you will...
That's right. We wouldn't want to burden current staff. So it's looking at, you know, how could we feasibly implement it?
Well, that's your point. To segue into that, it's definitely obvious, looking at the same slides, the negatively impact instructional time differs per the metal detecting and weapon scanners. And so, Ms. Pritchard, could you just kind of provide kind of a high-level synopsis about details of the input on student instructional and the differences that they have experienced as related to this?
And I think it would get better over the course of time. I mean, obviously, every day that we did this, the repetition got better and better, and we did not see that impact on instructional time.
Yeah.
I mean, we were able to get kids through.
I participated one day at Lakeside Elementary, for example, and they had the weapon scanner, and all the students arrived on time for instruction, except for those who were coming in on a late bus. But it wasn't due to the scanners that they missed any instructional time. So, you know, I think the number you gave about the number of students, you know, over 1,000 scanned in the same threshold of time as a much smaller number with the other scanners. So certainly, and we've also looked at implementations of the weapon scanners in other divisions, K-12, and they, you know, obviously are now using these in practice every day versus a field test. So to Mr. Pritchard's point, the more you do it, the quicker it goes. And so, we did this for a limited period of time, and so those numbers may even be exaggerated a bit as far as time it takes because it's something new. But in places where this has now become practice, we're seeing that, you know, there's little, if any, impact on instruction because it's a routine within the building.
Well, I'm glad that we did look at the diverse ways of doing it, not just one. And as you said, effectiveness and efficiency with repetition gets better. Next question on Phase Two and Three survey highlights. I'm appreciative that our families, because of our field testing, did worry less overwhelmingly. On mine, it's Slide 19, but it just says Phase Two and Phase Three survey highlights. But what I just want to know is that the staff was break even, 37%, error margin plus or minus three, so barely. So how can we, you know, be able to make them feel or make them worry less? What do you think we can do? You know, I'm just...
Yeah, so this question was really specifically, well, first of all, whether, you know, or not they feel safe because of the addition of the weapon scanner was sort of what we were really trying to get at here, but we know that this alone is one layer of safety. And so I think this data is telling. We certainly look at our climate data and other data we have school to school and, you know, get ideas on beyond the visible layers, what is it that contributes to that safe environment for employees? So I think, you know, we continue to leverage voice in that way, but you know, where this survey was really trying to gauge whether the addition of that equipment per se was a difference-maker, and you can see, in some cases, it was. It truly was.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Thank you so much, Ms. Pritchard. Again, look forward to next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Let's see, Ms. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard and team for their presentation, but for all of the hours and your mental well-being and your team's mental well-being and putting on the many, many, many hats, I just want to say thank you. I also want to prepare you because I have many... I also want to prepare you because I have many, many questions. So I want to just start with that so that you can bear with me and offer grace. I want to start with the anonymous alerts. Do you have a good idea or a summary on the utilization for anonymous alerts?
We can provide it.
I saw that in the presentation, so I just wanted to mention that. If you don't have an answer to that, that's fine, but I would like to better understand because I think the message that needs to hit home is that risk management tools, weapon detection, trust, trusting relationships, all of that is a part of keeping our kids safe. And while the presentation is mostly, in my opinion, about a response for weapon detection products, it really is layered, just like on this slide. And so I did pull out pieces of that because I think it's important to talk about that too as we engage in this conversation and not solely focus on this one piece without aligning it with the others, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and we can provide that data. I just want to be clear, we don't have it on hand, but we'll get usage data. I will tell you anecdotally, it's pretty high, the usage, which is good. We know that it's being leveraged, you know, and individuals reporting the kind of the, if you see something, say something. So that's positive, but we can get you usage data.
And that's why I brought that up because oftentimes it's going to be that, at least what I have seen and read, it is the trusting relationships of a student feeling comfortable sharing that they've seen a weapon or some other unfortunate incident. And so having and talking about anonymous alerts and promoting it just a little bit better is helpful. And so that's one of the bullet points here. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. I want to switch to the MOU for just a moment. And reading through our MOU, and I'll look to legal just in case there's anything I need to pause on. But in a part of that, under the school division responsibilities, it states, "School administrators and SROs will train jointly and annually." And I want to know if our school security officers are a part of that training and if not, why not?
Well, I know that we are continually working on that part. Right now, it is with our administrators and it's with our SROs that do this. I know that our SSOs receive training from our safety office. That is something that we can encompass and have them join in and be a part of.
I think it would be wise to take a look at that contract and think about some of the language specifically in those responsibilities. And I'll just leave it there, but thinking about being inclusive with our SSOs in that whole training process. So something to take a look at in the contract, even though I know it's already signed, just take a look at that.
It certainly doesn't preclude us. This really outlines responsibilities related to making sure SROs are trained with particular members of our team. But to your point, safety training.
The team should be SSOs as well.
And who and how we include. We can certainly do some things differently there. And then even thinking about how we conduct ongoing training throughout the year that may involve other staff, teachers, tabletop exercises. So it does, certainly doesn't preclude us and point taken.
Thank you so much in taking a look at that contract. And thinking about the Bus Referral App, I'm curious as to how we're pulling together the focus groups. Can you share a little bit more about that?
Well, I think we're going to go back and sit down and pull and work with school administrators and bus drivers that have been a part of this and get their feedback on the, how easy it is to use, how effective it's been to use. Is what we, what we're hoping to get out of this is that we are able to see the data in real time as far as where you are in the process, that I sent this, it's been referred, and then it's come back that, you know, something has happened with this data or with this referral. But it's going to mainly be with the people that are involved in that, in that aspect. It would be the drivers and it would be the school administrators.
Perfect. So you have answered my question because where I was headed was, I was curious if we looked at, looking outside of our staff in that focus group, looking at perhaps other schools that have that app and pulling them into the conversation. Maybe perhaps it's not in the focus group, but it might be something you want to consider for other areas that have similar applications that have gone through this and pulling them into those focus groups so that we have a much larger, diverse conversation that will produce results that might be more than what we would think of because we're so close to it. So that's just something for your consideration. And then in looking at the results, I know the survey provided percentages, but I'm curious as to response rates and the actual number of folks that participated. Do you have that number?
I do not, but I'll be glad to share that once we get that information.
So what the percentages do is give me an understanding based on segmenting, sort of a group of folks. But it's very hard to understand the impact without knowing the number. So, you know, you could have two people participate and your percentage would be 50% and 50%. That makes a difference on me understanding and sort of digesting the impact of it. So I would love to see what the actual numbers are, but appreciative of the percentage. And then also, in gathering this data, is it possible for it to be segmented by district or schools? It would also be interesting to find out based off of, if that's possible, what similarities are there in the response rates based off of district and schools? Because you could have a certain area because of the environment that prefer or leaned a certain way in a certain area in a certain environment that's so very different from another environment. And so if it's possible to segment it out by district or school, that would be helpful as well. And I see you're at the mic, Holly. I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Yes, we have, we have it all broken down by school, including the numbers in addition to the percentages that we can share with you.
Fantastic, because in thinking about constituents, it's nice to have the whole. But if we want to be specific to better understand which product best fits the environment, I think you need to segment that out. So thank you. I look forward to seeing that. And then I wanted to know if there has been a discussion, this may be a bit premature, but has there been any discussion on sort of false positives and what that looks like and what that process would be from a disciplinary perspective or a legal perspective?
No, I mean, I know from the standpoint of testing, I mean, we gave opportunities to go through the weapon scanner and the metal detectors and go back again, sometimes three times, depending on how well we were moving. If not, they were moved to a secondary device where they would go through, their persons were scanned and their backpack was searched. So I feel pretty confident that the people that were scanned, it was thoroughly done.
Thank you. And I figured this question would be a bit premature because right now the focus has been in the schools, but I'm thinking outside of the schools as a parent for a student that has to go through this process and you get a false positive. In other words, it might detect something is there, but then you send it through the student through the process again. And you might send that student to the, through that process a third time and then finally realize this student is okay. But as a parent, when that student gets home and share the experience of the false positive, I'm curious as to how we would handle that. So that, I hope when you're having the discussions, that's a part of the discussion as well. And then I'm almost landing the plane here. I received some feedback as well that I want to share it. And I've also shared an email with my colleagues because I received a consideration from a Highland Springs High School student. His name is Jeremiah. And his idea is to offer student ID badges for students. And there was three reasons for that and I'll read that to you. One of them is it helps with attendance. Oftentimes, when students come into the building, they'll have to log in and then the attendance clerk will have to verify who they are. But with an ID card, they could scan it much easier. You'll know who's in the building. The other thought that he shared was that it's also helpful specifically for high schools. I did not mention that this idea is for. But it also helps with the transition into the real world. Many employers, including Henrico County Public Schools, require a badge. And so to allow our high school students to feel that experience when they transition perhaps to an employer that requires a badge, it would be familiar. So that was one piece of feedback I received and I'll read the three others. One is school staff should only accept deliveries in a designated delivery area. And they shared a few examples of if we had a designated space, it would limit maybe some of the traffic. Implement a random lock sweep to ensure that all doors and locks are working correctly. And then scan to make sure that items aren't near the door to prop doors open. I've seen that one myself. And so the third one is to include character education during advisory and signage that complements it on being responsible, caring and contributing citizens. That one for me is a top priority as we walk through buildings and make sure that the signage is consistent. So whatever is picked for this building is consistent throughout Henrico County on character and being thankful and grateful for our students stepping up and speaking out. And I did say I was going to land the plane, so I have one more. That was the feedback. But I also, I must say, I am, I'm a bit concerned. So I know we need to do research to understand effectiveness and impact. We are in April. We're going to get another update in June. Generally, school boards, we don't meet in July. Well, school begins in August. At what point do we feel, I would feel more comfortable if we had a timeline. You know, this is the target date where we're hopeful that a decision is going to be made because based off of what I hear, we're going to be well into September, October. And I'm hopeful that I'm wrong, so please correct me if I'm inaccurate, but based off of what I've seen in the presentation, that's where we would be before we could get the opportunity to just make the decision. The implementation will take much longer. But when do we expect to at least be able to make a decision as a board collectively?
The intent is to come back with a recommendation for the board to have a decision point in June. So we felt that while we gathered a lot of good data at the field test schools and were able to sort of peel away one method for potential screening, we felt it's important and certainly know the board's emphasis on making sure we're getting feedback from the full community. We've really only surveyed the particular field tests about this topic and want to provide to you when we come back in June, not only some specifics around models for staff, potential pricing, as well as survey data from our entire community on that one weapons detection piece. So the recommendation would be in June and then certainly decision-making, that would be a decision-making point if you would want to take the recommendations that we would bring forward to you at that time. You know, certainly implementation timelines would be recommended, but certainly up to the board at that point.
So the presentation will happen in June and the expectation is the decision as well, without the opportunity to sort of digest it?
Well, certainly that's the board's prerogative if you need more time. This is certainly one opportunity to weigh what we've learned so far. We didn't want to wait to June. So I think, you know, the thought was we provide a good amount of information about what we've learned from our field tests, an opportunity to know, are there other things you would like to know before you get to a decision point? We know certainly the board's emphasis on community feedback, so, you know, our recommendation is to gather that. We have plans already underway to launch that survey on Monday. And then, you know, as Mr. Pritchard mentioned, putting together some specific cost estimates and would certainly, between now and June, if there are other questions you have as board members about things you would want to know as we get to a decision point, would certainly welcome those so we can be prepared to bring answers forward in June.
I appreciate that. I'm trying to figure out how we move forward a bit faster. I'll just be very honest speaking. For me, I'd like to see us move swiftly. The way in which we do that, I think, is a challenge for sure. And it certainly takes, I'm appreciative of the resources that we have, as I said before. There are many wearing many, many hats. But I also understand with recruitment, retaining, and where we are today, I would like to see us move a bit swifter. So whatever it is that I can do or we could do or the community to help would be appreciated. How long is the survey, two weeks or one week?
Two weeks. And we can, we certainly don't have to wait until the board meeting to get you that data. I mean, we can certainly provide information as we pull it together. And then, of course, we would want to formally present it in a setting like this once more, but certainly we don't have to hold that information until that June presentation and can provide you that information along the way, as well as if, you know, you have questions that come to mind that we haven't already answered, we'd be happy to be doing that legwork simultaneous.
I appreciate that. And Lenny, I appreciate your grace because I know these were a lot of questions, some of whom and some of which you don't have answers for. I recognize that. But I'm hopeful that I'll have those answers fairly quickly. And even with survey results, as we move forward with surveys, it is important to also share the actual numbers along with the percentages in order to digest the impact. And so that's just a bit of feedback, not just for this survey, but any future surveys in understanding how many people really participated and that's how you get your participation rate. And so I appreciate that. So thank you so much, Mrs. Cancela.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Sogburn.
I would agree with Ms. Atkins. It takes a little grace because this is a topic we all have a lot to talk about. So yeah, I'm, I'm will be lengthy too. First of all, if we could go to the first, I must do what Reverend Cooper, let's go to the first one. Well, I'm sorry. The one with the blue ribbon panel recommendations, that one. Were there others that the blue ribbon, other recommendations from the blue ribbon panel or are these ones that we just have in progress?
So we brought forward a full presentation in the fall with all of the recommendations that, there were some smaller than what you see here, but these were the bigger ones and the ones we allocated $5 million towards progress. So we began this work, the panel did their work assessing in the summer months and then they brought forth some recommendations I shared with the board in the fall, I believe it was September or October. And then we identified the funds and then wanted to show progress that we've made on working towards putting those things into implementation.
Right. And the reason why I ask that question is because I know there are people who haven't looked at the ones that have come before.
Yes.
But there are other recommendations. This is just our status of what we're working on right now.
Yeah, this represents the $5 million we brought forward to begin working in the fall on some of the bigger recommendations that came out of the blue ribbon safety panel.
And if we could go back to the summary of findings, I, I'm sorry, Tiffany, I don't know which one it is, but it's that, keep going. That one. Can you give us just a little bit more? For example, you talked about negative impacts on instructional time. That is just simply how long it takes the kids to get through there. I get that. The positively impact student, staff and family sense of safety, both of those are substantive results, but was there a tremendous difference in that between?
I don't think so, no.
No, it was slightly.
Metal versus weapon?
It was slightly higher on the weapon scanners because of the more people, the sense of security that more people would be scanned. So particularly the student responses on the metal detectors, that perception of safety was lower related to the fact that not everyone was screened. It was randomized.
Randomized. But the ability to access most students arriving on campus, is this one more geared towards our campus-style schools or is this, I mean, because this bothers me a little bit. I mean, I want to be sure that if we do this, that we can access most students or all students arriving on campus. So why is it the difference here?
So the metal detectors are the traditional walkthroughs. So that meant we were, because you can't funnel every single student in a high school through that feasibly and still even, you know, you'd have a really late start to the instructional day. That's what we learned, that, you know, and you can't scan everyone feasibly. So that's the answer is no, we had to use a randomized approach, like certain days it would be every eighth student or every 15th student. With the weapon scanners, the way they're structured and can be placed in an open campus or a traditional building at various entry points, you can capture everyone arriving because you walk through sort of like they're used in arenas or amusement parks, as Mr. Pritchard stated.
Well, and that's what I was going to ask is because we're all getting used to walking through something when we go to, you know, any kind of coliseum, an entertainment venue, any kind of thing like that, we're all getting used to that. Are most of those that we see weapon, if y'all know, weapon scanners or metal detectors? I know the narrow ones that I'm thinking of are the metal detectors, right?
Most of what you see at everyday events, concert venues, stadiums, would be weapon scanners.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Because I think that's, I mean, I think it's, you know, people are just getting used to it. That's why I was a little surprised to see that, that there was a negative impact on the mental health and well-being. How are we, where are we getting that from?
And that's comments coming in from the staff and students. I think we have to recognize that even though the weapon scanners are not obtrusive and it's not where you know you're walking through this or getting wanded, just knowing that they're there, there's an increased sense of, I think, you know, rethinking any trauma related to past safety events or drills. I think it's, it's bringing to light that sense for our students that can, you know, make some uncomfortable, understandably. And so, I think that's really what that's speaking to there, and that perception came through, both in the focus groups and the surveys with the folks in those buildings, understanding that I think, you know, Mrs. Consella opened it up with, I'm sorry, we have to be having a conversation about safety, but it's so important.
Totally agree.
You know, it's a, it's a heavy thing, and when you have these installed in your building, I think it's a reminder of the place we're in with, with community safety, and that doesn't always feel good, even if it's a proactive measure. So I think that's what that's capturing.
But do we anticipate, though, that over time is, I'm just curious how others that might have implemented something like this over time, is it something people just adjust to? They're like, okay, this is keeping me safe. Maybe it turns around, which is what I'm hoping.
Yeah, it certainly seems that way in looking at other localities. I think, you know, Mr. Pritchard mentioned some, some neighboring localities in Virginia have done this work. And then, we also, there's a very large school division in North Carolina we looked at, larger than Henrico's, had this implementation for quite a while. So they've got a good bit of data and have had this in play for quite a while. And certainly, just like the speed gets, you know, increases positively, the more everyone's used to it and the procedures, so does that feeling of, you know, being settled, more settled because it becomes a part of the culture and climate in the building.
Well, and I, I think too, if we were to proceed with this, how we implement it and the messaging we give to the community and to the students will go a long way to how it's perceived and how our students will go, yeah, we're all trying to protect you, we're all in this together. And I think our messaging is going to be important. But I will, the reason why I ask about the campus schools is because, I'll just put a plug in, I mean, Reverend Cooper and I were talking about this earlier. We took our last board picture today. So we don't have many more opportunities to say certain things, but one thing I will say is I think we need to put some priority in replacing our campus schools because those are, that's completely unrelated and a, but your operations, it all falls into the same thing. Our campus schools are the schools I hear from the most as far as security concerns. And I think we need to look at that. Maybe there's a different plan for a campus school compared to a, a school with, with traditional style with four walls, but I think we're going to have to look at the differences, maybe.
I would like to note on that topic, when it comes to weapon scanners and open campus schools, and your comment may be about a lot of things beyond safety and security when it comes to the campus-style buildings, and we'll certainly take note of that. But one of the positives with the weapon scanners, the way the equipment is, it's weatherproof, rechargeable batteries, it's movable, it works well in an outdoor campus and can be used at multiple entry points on an outdoor campus, including outside of a bus loop area or so on. So that is a positive, and it does address some of the needs that we have at our campus-style schools. I did want to make that clear, and that's one of the reasons the schools that were chosen for the tests included those open campus styles and the ability to compare what that would look like.
Well, and those are the parents I hear from the most who are concerned about campus-style schools. And, and I think that's just going to be, we're going to have to work through it. But I will echo something that Ms. Atkins said, and that is what I'm hearing from the community, and I'm not suggesting, and I don't think from what Ms. Atkins said she is either, that we go in haste without doing our due diligence and, and getting the work done that we need to do. But I hear from the community that they want us to move a little faster, that they want us to come up with solutions and to have something in place as soon as is practical and that, but at the same time, that we make really, really well-informed and the right decisions. But I just think that the slower we go, the more we're going to hear about it. And the people really want us to do something. You know what I mean? It's a weird way to say it, but they, they need that confidence. They need to know that we are being proactive and that we're hearing them. I mean, obviously, you'd have to have been living under a rock to not know what my community went through this week at Holman. And I have heard from a lot of parents, and unrelated this, but it's a safety issue in general. And safety is something that is at the forefront of parents' minds right now, and they want it to know it's at our, at the forefront of our minds, which we know it is, but they want to see and they want to hear us, that that is what we're doing.
And, and, you know, I think the sense of urgency is felt by each and every one of us when it comes to school safety. And I know this is not favored to say, can you please find whatever number slide, but the one that has all the layers on there, because I think it's important to remember that.
It's true.
You know, we're, we're digging in deep to data related to the field tests on weapons detection, but that is by no means all we're doing for security. And Mrs. Atkins said it really well, like this is a layered plan, and we don't want to put so much attention on one thing that that becomes somehow the thought that this is the answer to our safety and security issues because certainly, it's an additional layer. All the other layers matter, and there may be more layers we need to be considering we haven't considered yet. So this, this is, you know, an ongoing effort that has lots of different tentacles, and this board, you know, has really put safety and security on the forefront. We've had a number of presentations since the beginning of the year focused on anything from how do we train our people, what are the right human resources we need to have in place, making sure that, you know, we make funding available right away for things that we can. For example, the Blue Ribbon Safety work earlier in the year, those are all things that are happening constantly, our audit processes. And, I mean, and you can see the, the work that's being done on the vestibules, all those investments on, on everything are, you know, new this year securely, an entirely new safety and security when it comes to making sure we're keeping our students safe online and monitoring their health and well-being that year. So I think if you point to just this school year alone, you know, there are a number of significant outcomes and progress that's been made when it comes to school safety. We're not complacent, we're never complacent, we're not finished. We want to do our due diligence with the, the metal detection, weapons detection thing because as we're sensing even from our, our field test communities, there are mixed feelings, and we want to get it right, and we want to make sure that if there is angst, you know, if this board decides to move forward with an installation, that we're prepared to address that angst and do it well. And may, you know, that's what we want to make sure we're, we're addressing that because it's not just as simple as putting up weapons detectors. It's the people who have to implement them well, the effect it has on the community, what does that look like? So certainly hear you and appreciate the urgency around this topic and all things safety, not just with the weapon scanners because this board has placed an emphasis on that, and we've been able to make good progress because of the time and investment you've put into prioritizing that. But certainly hear your feedback with speed, and so we will keep bringing you pieces of information even before June as we get them. And again, welcome any ideas related to other information points you may need as, as you're weighing next steps related to weapons detection.
Now, and I greatly appreciate that because we all know that it is all about layers, and we know the layers that are there. I think the community just feels like this is great, and they love it, and they see it on a daily basis, but this particular topic is one that they, they want us to move forward and give them the, and I think what they're waiting for is exactly what's happening right now, which is information on, on how did the field tests go, how did it, you know, and where we're going to make, where we're going forward with it. I, I think I dare to say we're going to hear about it if we wait till June to hear more. I really do, because I worry about that same exact thing you said, because then we're not implement, we're not voting, because if we don't hear till June, we won't be able to possibly, because we only have one meeting in June, we would have to wait till August, and then we're well into, so I'm hoping maybe we can visit that timeline, is all I'm asking.
We're happy to come back at, at every meeting with updates.
Let's do it.
I mean, truthfully, our, our thought was June would be a decision point. You would be taking action in June, which would allow us to begin work and if there's any necessary procuring throughout the summer. But, you know, certainly, if the board wishes to take action or would like a recommendation at any point, I can give you one based on the information I have. I'm not prepared to give you an administration, administrative recommendation related to next steps on a wall-to-wall metal detector installation today, based on the information I have, you know.
But if we could get more information in May, that, I think that would really help us be ready to move in June, at least my request, if we could get that. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogburn. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you so much. Mr. Pritchard, I would like to start with the Blue Ribbon Panel and that there is an order in process for card readers. Security-wise, I don't know if you can give me an update on timeline, timeline here, but if not, I would love to connect and, and understand what that timeline looks like. I was at Project Maverick this morning, which is where seniors give solutions to problems they see, and there was actually multiple projects about the benefits of, of door swipes and IDs being worn at all times by the students. And I want to give Mr. Faglione's class a shout-out for pulling me aside and saying, "Ms. Shea, you have to hear this." And those students had really dug into the benefits of it, security-wise, and also some of the pitfalls in terms of implementation and solutions from a student's perspective. It was wonderful. They also brought up, kind of like Ms. Atkins mentioned, opportunity for efficiencies with our pending bus swipes, lunch lines, tardy attendance, and more if our students are already wearing ID badges where they can swipe. Moving on to metal, our weapons detectors, like my colleagues, I'm very troubled that we're in a place that we have to have this conversation. Mr. Pritchard or Dr. Cashwell, were any, were any weapons recovered by the detectors during our field tests?
No.
And, and my follow-up question is a tough question, but do we have an idea if this isn't a result of the detectors successfully deterring students from bringing weapons or the detectors being unnecessary or the detectors not accurately identifying weapons?
So given the length of time, I think it'd be hard, you know, in the field test, it'd be hard to extrapolate a cause, but what we do know from places where these have been in, in place for a period of time and the data collected there is that it appears to have a deterrent effect. So when you look at school systems that have done the wall-to-wall implementation, you compare a school year prior to installation and after, and the number of weapons recovered significantly, is significantly reduced because, and again, at our field test schools, they were aware that these were being installed. We let them know ahead of time.
Once, this has been alluded to a little bit, but to be specific, once installed, and not necessarily in this temporary setting, but if installed, how noticeable would these detectors be?
They're quite visible.
Yeah, they are.
Piggybacking on Reverend Cooper's concern, I also have concern about who will man these every morning to allow them to be used with fidelity. Our staff have too much on their plates already. We cannot ask them to do one more thing. So I feel very strongly that we must add stipends and/or additional SSOs to cover this additional load in the morning. It cannot just be wrapped into another morning duty that teachers rotate through.
And I would point out, that's one of the things that, you know, with Grace, we are needing some more time before coming back in June, and is really to try to determine what those models look like from a staffing perspective. The way we staff our elementary, middle, and high schools are different when it comes to the available staff to be able to pull this off. We want to make a thoughtful recommendation about what is feasible. We don't want to simply add equipment, then that requires a lot of extra manpower and people that we either may not have at some level, or it's requiring extra work. So want to make a thoughtful recommendation of the reality of that because as you saw on the slide of comparison, both methods required more people, and they may be people we don't have today, and we need to understand that in making any recommendation about next steps.
Well, I appreciate that thought being put in. It's so important that if we have them, that they are used with fidelity because if they're not, it can create a false sense of security. We've seen in neighboring divisions to ourselves that metal detectors that have been in place in buildings, they've still confiscated loaded firearms in those buildings. So it's important, if we implement this, that it is done with fidelity on a daily basis. And then, just to, just to wrap up shortly, I know I have said this before, but having a public discussion about school safety, it's incumbent on me, just to reiterate, that safety for our schools right now has to be an all-hands-on-deck with all of our stakeholders, including our families, community partners, and state, national, and local leaders. We need our families to communicate real consequences for bringing weapons, making threats, and what students post on social media. And we need all members of our community, especially those with students and children in their home, to properly secure firearms and weapons. If students do not have access to weapons, they cannot bring them to school. That is all, Chair Consella.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. You would think that my colleagues who have done such an extraordinary job would have asked every question, but they have not. So bear with me, Mr. Pritchard. I'm going to start with, you know, we, we said back in December, when we sat with our board of supervisors colleagues, that we would leave no stone unturned and that we would protect our students and staff at all costs. So I really appreciate the work you're doing. I know that we, to Ms. Atkins' point, followed up by Ms. Ogburn, we have a May 11th work session, May 25th work session and meeting, then we have graduations at the beginning of June, so our, again, to our monthly meeting at the end of June, on June 22nd. So if the survey is done April 24th to May 10th, I just concur with my colleagues, I'd like to move faster too, and that's not to say that I don't want to be efficient, I don't want to be thorough or thoughtful, but waiting until June 22nd just seems so far out when we've had so much time, it would seem, right? And I know there are so many layers in place, but.
We'll bring information to the very next meeting and the meeting after until you're ready to make a decision.
Sure. Thank you for that. And then, Mr. Pritchard or Dr. Cashwell, when, when you went through the field tests, what were your thoughts or considerations when you spoke to folks in other states who have done this? What are the considerations to all of the entry points we have in all of our buildings? There are so many entry points.
And I think one of the things that I really liked about it was the fact that we went to six different schools and we got to see the entry points that was the main focal point of each school. You know, I know, like, at some of these schools, there were two, bus loop and the main entrance coming in, so that, that helped focus that. Some of the schools already have all of that stuff in place, it's just a matter of putting the equipment there and, and running the procedures. You know, and that was even on our campus-style schools. We were able to capture the majority of the kids that walked on the campus from different places and, and get them to, to where we needed to go to do scanning.
And I think it's incumbent upon us, as Ms. Atkins said, to do a marketing campaign as to the student, as to all the layers for folks who don't feel safe, to remind them of all the layers that we have in place. But not only that, one of the most important that we have in our schools is not only the see something, say something. I know our students have really listened to us in, when we've encouraged them to, if you see something, say something, but also not to open the doors. I know we have placards and signs all over Henrico schools, do not open doors, do not open doors. If we could add that piece, because while these scanners or metal detectors are an added layer, they don't protect against all threats, and opening doors is, is another type of threat that we need to protect our students and staff against. And then, next, again, just appreciate all the layers outlined on Slide 3. Slide 4. I believe Ms. Atkins, I mean, not Ms. Atkins, Ms. Shea asked about the timeline. We probably. We probably can't give dates on this because as to safety, but are we can't even like a, by summer school, by fall 2023? Can we be, can we give any specifics on anything? Like we've got the in progress, just in progress and process? I mean, are we going to experience back orders?
So I think Mr. Pritchard gave a few details on the script that aren't here on this slide related to some of the orders and some backlog. But no, I mean, I wouldn't expect, you know, long-term delays. I mean, most of this is underway right now. And in some cases, there are some wait time. But for example, you know, with the radios being in hand, still got to get them distributed, that kind of thing. But we can provide specifics to the board on each of these projects and installation timelines.
Thank you. I absolutely don't want to compromise safety in any way. Let me see. Slide 6. Bus safety. Why did we not pilot a high school?
I think we are eventually working to that. We still have opportunity to do so. We're going to capture as much as we can. I think we started off being that we fell behind because of supply chain issues with the tablets and getting them installed. Then we started working, but we can surely try to capture a high school before we walk out the doors in June.
Yeah, I definitely encourage that because given the behavior that honestly the board hears about and that families hear about and we and our staff share with us, I would like to definitely see high schools piloted as well. How are the bus drivers feeling about having the tablets? Are they feeling better, a paper system versus?
I think it's like anything else, you're getting used to doing something new. But overall, the responses have been great. And the fact that it also helps with routing, it's not just that part of it. I mean, it's like having something right there when you are stuck, particularly if you're a sub in an area, driving for the first time in that area. It's very helpful. But I think that they are finding it to be a very useful tool for them in their effectiveness and efficiency and all the things they do. And I mean, eventually, this is going to replace all the paper products of doing pre-bus checks.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a great tool for them to have. And I think that they're embracing it, it's just that it's new, so.
Well, I appreciate that. And just for the record and for anyone who's listening, we didn't just come up with this. Like you said, the tablets were supposed to be here in September. They didn't get here till December. I know Mrs. Shea and I were fortunate enough to attend the back-to-school orientation for all of our bus drivers in Henrico schools. And that's when it was presented. So this has been in the works for quite some time, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, thank you for that, Mr. Pritchard. And then on Slide 9. Survey only in two languages, English and Spanish. I would just like to encourage more than two languages. As we know, we have more than 100 in Henrico schools. And that's all I have. Thank you so much, Mr. Pritchard.
Madam Chair, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
As I've listened to everything and just kind of like the societal where we are, I just want to say, I do want to say to our constituents and even our staff that safety has been and will continue to be a cornerstone as we know that. I want to make sure that we are realistic, measured, comprehensive, and not reactive and impulsive because our cornerstone is student safety and wellness. For us, safety and security isn't just about weapon detection. It's about protecting our students and teachers from physical aggression, fights, threats, and bullying. And so this has been an ongoing issue. And I just want to make sure that this is not the situation because now it's hurting, happening in certain schools that there's security threats. Now there's a sense of urgency when there've been schools where weapons have been found and it's not the same sense of urgency. So it's just important that we don't adapt this, you know, NIMBY situation, not in my backyard, but now since it is in my backyard. So I just, as we move forward, the pathway forward, I just want to make sure that our community understands that we care about all of our citizens, all of our schools. And it's not just because certain schools might have certain incidents, but there have been other schools that they have had incidences and there has not been this call for a sense of urgency. Just want to be clear about that.
Reverend Cooper, I would say this has been a topic of conversation of great concern for the board, Dr. Cashwell, and the entire division. Not that it just, it happened in one school. I mean, we've been talking about this. I've been on the board since January 1st, 2020, and we've been talking about safety. But I certainly appreciate, I do appreciate your comments. And thank you so much for the presentation, Mr. Pritchard.